It says that we have Cub Scout Pack Three bringing in the flag.
Uh huh.
And they have already brought it in, and here it is. That's fantastic. Um, I'm gonna ask for roll call, and then I'm gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla? Uh, I might.
Rick?
Um, I'll have to text him until make sure he gets back on the call. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gothel?
Here. Uh, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance for this regularly scheduled meeting this twentieth day of April two thousand twenty. Please mute your microphones if you don't mind. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Uh, uh, two quick things. One, um, we should, we should mark the, the fiftieth year of Earth Day. On Wednesday, we'll be celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of, of the original Earth Day, uh, and April twenty-second. And we have come a long way. We're doing amazing things in terms of our climate action plan and many other things, but we have a long, long way to go. And so there are many ways to celebrate Earth Day on Wednesday. Please celebrate in whatever ways that you can. Um, I, I will also mention, this is just off the top of my head, that I was walking into the building and I saw that football. It was just three years ago that I was, uh, mayor, and we had the Super Bowl here, and I went up to, to the Wounded Warrior football game, and, and, uh, and, and it was just a fond memory that I had of, of Greg St. Clair holding this incredible football, getting it signed by all these professional athletes, these former NFL guys, and then there was Snoop. And Snoop came over and he signed the football. And I don't know why that popped in my head today, but I saw the football and, uh, and, uh, happy April twentieth to everyone. Uh, with that, um, I want to remind everyone that we have several ways of making comments. Due to physical distancing protocols that are in place at this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. E-commerce can be provided through the website Public Meetings Portal, which is at cityofsanmateo.org using the Speak Up San Mateo button. Or you can phone in to participate, and you can phone in by calling nine five one four zero five two nine five six with the conference ID number six four six zero one two two eight three pound. These numbers are noted at the top of the agenda as well. And so those are the two ways of providing public comment during this meeting. Uh, a public meeting, another reminder, a public meeting was initially advertised for tonight, but the introduction of AB seventeen sixty-three ordinance will be, uh, rescheduled in order to staff, in order for staff to conduct further analysis of the ordinance's potential environmental impacts uh, in accordance with CEQA. Uh, with that having been said, Madam Clerk, would you introduce the items on the consent agenda?
With pleasure, Mayor. And, um, for the record, Rick Bonilla is on the call.
Excellent. Rick Bonilla is here, presented.
Okay. So for our consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, City Council Meeting Minutes approval. Item number two, Public Assistance Cost Recovery, Designation of Authority for Expense Reimbursement. Item number three, Community Development Block Grant Funds Supplemental Appropriation. Item number four, Fiscal Year twenty nineteen twenty Budget Appropriations. Item number five, San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority Joey Exercise of Powers Agreement Amendment. Item number six, Microfilm and Paper Records Digitization and Ongoing Document Scanning Services Agreement. Item number seven, Foster City Usage of Police Firing Range Facilities Agreement. Item number eight, City of San Bruno Usage of Police Firing Range Facilities Agreement. Item number nine, Classification Update, City Managers Office, Community Development Department, and Public Works Department. Item number ten, Service Employees International Union Library Merit Unit, Memorandum of Understanding Amendments. Item number eleven, Service Employees International Union Library Perdiem Unit Memorandum of Understanding Amendments, and item number twelve, A Resolution Denouncing Stigmatization, Racism, and Xenophobia.
Excellent. Uh, is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council would like to pull? Seeing none, is there any item on the agenda that a member of the public would like to pull?
I have no, uh, e-commerce or a phone call in at this time.
Then I will entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve. Consent. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, let's have a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Uh, Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen? Councilmember Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Gothel?
Aye. Uh, so that passes unanimously. Excellent. Um, now is the time for public comment. As I just mentioned earlier, uh, you can make public comment in one of two ways. E-commerce can be received by clicking on the Speak Up San Mateo button, which is on our website at cityofsanmateo.org. And phone-in participation can be accomplished by calling nine five one four zero five two nine five six and using the conference ID number six four six zero one two two eight three pound. All of those numbers, all of that information is at the top of our posted agenda. Now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to share a public comment on some item that is not on the agenda tonight? Madam Clerk, do we have any, uh, public comment?
I do not have any call-ins, and I just refreshed the Speak Up screen, and there is nothing under General Public Comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay, excellent. So we will close the public comment period, move on to, uh, item thirteen. Item thirteen was a public hearing. That item, uh, has been pulled, uh, and will be on a future agenda that had to do with an ordinance introduction for AB seventeen sixty-three. And when that lands on a future agenda, it will appear on our website under the What's Happening page of Community Development. So on to item number fourteen. Madam Clerk, would you read the title for item number fourteen?
With pleasure, Mayor. Item fourteen is the COVID-nineteen update and an update on downtown opportunity sites, project funding timeline, and consideration of resolution appropriating funds to San Mateo County Strong Fund for Small Business Assistance.
Excellent. Uh, Drew, do you have a presentation on this item?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So this is this week's COVID-nineteen update. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I want to just get started off with a couple of updates on the operations. Uh, as, as everyone is probably aware at this point, the health officer issued a revised order on April seventeenth requiring that masks be worn in public. So if you're inside or in line at any essential business, a healthcare facility, or on public transportation, you'll need to be wearing a mask. Um, also, employees must be wearing masks unless they're working alone. And then, uh, finally, masks were recommended for outdoor exercise, but not required. Uh, so as, as it relates to us, I think our primary focus is going to be on education over enforcement. Uh, we're gonna add this information in our business outreach calls. Uh, we're gonna be monitoring calls for, to dispatch. So far, we have not seen an uptick as a, as a result of this, and we're setting up a line to code enforcement. And really, we're gonna be looking to educate the businesses to make sure that, that they're compliant, and they're making sure their customers are compliant. Uh, additionally, we're, we're starting to think about, uh, what reopening looks like for our city facilities. So we've put together a task for, force of fourteen members across city, city departments. And, um, you know, based on where we are now, we're really thinking that, um, any sort of reopening is gonna be phased, um, and it's gonna require us to have continued adjustments to our operations. We're planning as if there are gonna be requirements for PPE for employees and the public. Uh, we're planning as if there'll be continued social distancing protocols. Um, we are thinking about the impact of that in terms of our ability to bring all of our staff back at once. And if we're not able to do that, how are we gonna accommodate that? How are we gonna accommodate the public in terms of if we're limited to the number of people that we can have in City Hall? And so, you know, we, we've got a group that's planning on that so that we are ready when, uh, the orders come down that allow us to start gradually reopening our facilities. We've got, uh, also the library and Parks and Recreation are also working on site-specific plans for their facilities. And additionally, uh, the city managers in the county formed a couple of subcommittees very, on very short notice, uh, just to provide a little input and feedback operationally on the health order. And so, um, there was a committee on recreation programming, because it's, it's imperative that, um, some decisions are made very soon on, um, what's go, what things are gonna look like in terms of opening things up so that we can determine, uh, what recreation programming is gonna look like. And we're gonna try to have some level of consistency throughout the county, um, and also providing some feedback on, uh, construction and landscaping as it, as it relates to the next series of health orders that come out, uh, which we would expect in a couple of weeks. So based on last week's discussion, um, staff worked to put together a Safe Streets Initiative that we're gonna start, planning on starting to roll out tomorrow. Um, there's gonna be a social media campaign, uh, which is just really focused on slowing down and being aware of your surroundings. Uh, we're planning to do some changeable message signs in strategic locations. Um, we're also planning to make adjustments to our flashing pedestrian signals. So the ones that we control, we would basically set them to automatically, um, have the, the walk sign on when the green, when you, when you have the green light, so you didn't have to push the button. Uh, we're looking to do some, uh, additional A-frames with safety messages for bikes and pedestrians. And then we're, uh, planning a pilot of a no-through traffic on selected streets. And so with that, just wanted to show kind of the, the campaign literature we have, uh, for Safe Streets San Mateo with really a focus on drivers slowing down, everyone paying attention, um, you know, with people sharing more space these days. And then, uh, some information about parking smart on rolled curbs, uh, so that strollers and wheelchairs can get by. And really focused on, again, really people staying alert so everyone can be safe. Uh, in terms of the dynamic message boards, I have just a map here with four locations where we're planning on putting the dynamic message boards, which will just emphasize the, the Safe Streets Initiative. Westbound on East Third Avenue, uh, northbound on El Camino, uh, eastbound on Fashion Island, and westbound on East Hillsdale are all proposed locations for the changeable message boards. And just as an aside, actually, um, I did wanna note that over the past thirty days, um, we've had, um, twenty-four total accidents, and I, I think only three of them were injury accidents. And if you compare that to twenty nineteen, where we had a hundred and thirty-six accidents over that same thirty-day period, so we've seen a dramatic reduction in the number of accidents. I mean, so having cars off the road has definitely made a huge difference in terms of the overall safety of our streets. So those are some really good statistics that the, the police department provided today. And this next slide is just a picture of kind of what the, the, the road closures to through traffic looks like. It's just basically some barricades on, on one side of the road. So the road is still open, but the idea is to only have the local traffic on those roads and, and not any cut-through traffic, not any through traffic, um, with, with the idea that then more people will be sharing that space. So in terms of, of the where for the, the Safe Streets, uh, Public Works staff did a great job kind of identifying places that they thought made sense, um, to, to pilot the Safe Streets Initiative. And so we have five locations identified. Uh, the, uh, one would be Monte Diablo from, uh, San Mateo Drive to Idaho, Fremont from Monte, Monte Diablo to Tenth, Hacienda from twenty-second to twenty-seventh, Derby from Delaware to east of Bays, and East Thirty-Ninth from Pacific to Branson. And some of the factors we took into account when, um, looking at those particular locations, um, it was looking at, you know, uh, traffic volumes, when, when school's not in session, uh, whether there were truck routes or fire, uh, fire routes, prioritizing TOD and multifamily residents to serve, uh, to serve folks who do not necessarily have access to individual open space. As far as the rollout goes, uh, the plan is, um, to start with Bay Meadows. Um, the, the neighborhood layout is really i- ideal for, for this sort of thing. And we also feel like the neighborhood is most ready. We've already been engaged with them and had discussions about it, and actually, uh, pending council direction tonight. Um, we're planning on meeting with them tomorrow to start talking about the specifics. Um, as to the other locations, we haven't done any specific outreach, so we did wanna get, uh, get out there, do some community outreach to get some feedback, make sure that this was of interest to, to these areas, and, and learn any concerns that, that the neighborhoods might have about doing this. And then we would phase in those other sites based on the feedback. And then obviously, we would monitor it carefully and, and make adjustments as necessary. Um, and they, we're estimating that the, the cost for the full initiative, which we're estimating to be about two months long, um, would be about fifteen thousand for signage and messaging. Um, and that would be like the changeable message boards and, and some of the printed material for the A-frames, which we already have. And then another fifteen thousand for the, the no-through traffic pilot locations, which for the most part, for there, we've, we've got the A-frames, we've got the cones. It's just there's a lot of signage that needs to, to be made up, um, which is also something we would need to get underway before we could roll this out. Uh, just shifting to redeployment now, we've got about seventeen, uh, people in the redeployment pool, and they've all been assigned as of today. Um, we've identified a couple of new opportunities. We've got a couple of folks that are spending a little bit of time each week, uh, walking the commercial areas to ensure that COVID-nineteen notifications are posted, and if they're not, uh, providing education to the, to the businesses that are remaining open, that they do need to have these notifications posted. And we're also working with the county to, um, help, uh, provide resources to support census outreach via phone. Um, that hasn't, uh, gotten underway yet, but we are in discussions with the county, and they've indicated that that would be something that we could assist with. As far as business outreach goes, we've, um, Jennifer Chen and her team have made two hundred and seven calls through April seventeenth and made seventy-six direct contacts and left seventy-seven voicemails. Uh, ten of the calls have been made to childcare providers. Um, these calls just are, uh, to check in on the businesses, see how things are going, see what their needs are, trying to educate on the social distancing protocols and, and the new mask requirements, uh, letting them know about tax relief programs from the state, uh, the status of federal programs, and then, uh, making sure they're aware of the commercial eviction moratorium. And as far as business assistance goes, last week, we had a discussion about the potential for the city providing, uh, funding for business grants. So I just wanted to follow up on that and provide, um, some more specific information about how that would work. Um, this is a partnership. These are emergency grants for small businesses, and it's a partnership between SAMCDA, the county, and the San Mateo Credit Union. And what it would do is provide funding for payroll and operations or any other ongoing obligations that a business has. Uh, cities can provide funds to, through San Mateo County Strong Fund that could be earmarked for businesses in San Mateo. Um, and then the credit union, their, their role, and they're using their underwriting resources to handle, uh, the application screening for eligibility and completeness. And, um, just as, in terms of criteria, um, this, these grants are intended for for-profit companies with up to ten employees or less than two-point-five million in revenues. Um, they've, they've had, they've had to have all their applicable licenses and permits in place, um, for the last year, and they have to have a physical location in the county and have been open for at least a year. They've also got to demonstrate a twenty-five percent reduction in gross revenues due to COVID-nineteen. They've gotta provide documentation on their annual net business income, and provide twelve months of income and expense documentation, and also provide, uh, information, uh, on any other assistance programs that they've applied for. Now, uh, that would not preclude them from getting a grant, but they do have to disclose any, any programs that they've applied for. And then finally, shifting over to the Downtown Opportunity Sites Project, uh, that project is currently in the entitlements process, and it's set to go to, uh, for a Planning Commission Study Session next Tuesday. Um, that, that project shifted, um, with, with AB seventeen sixty-three to discussing a, uh, from, from discussing a five-story project to discussing the potential for a seven-story prod, uh, project. And so I just wanted to, uh, go over the outreach that was done on that revised seven-story project. Um, we did have two council study sessions considering the higher project. Uh, staff in Mid-Penn also met with the Central and North Central Neighborhood Associations at their regular HOA meetings in January and February. And in February, there was another community meeting that was open to the public with about sixty attendees. Uh, in terms of the planned next steps for that project, we are shooting to get entitlements, uh, finished and approved by September first. Um, and the next steps for that would be that, the study session next week with the Planning Commission, and then a Planning Commission hearing in July for the title, entitlements, within, uh, the City Council hearing for the entitlements and the project financial agreements in August. And, uh, the reason why we're shooting for September first is we do have a five-million-dollar infill infrastructure grant application that's due in October. And in order to be competitive for that grant, we need to have the entitlements at that point. Um, and also, uh, getting it finished, getting the entitlements by September first also keeps us on track, uh, for the other planned funding applications like the tax credits and the tax-exempt bonds and the project-based vouchers. So with that, I'm requesting council confirmation tonight of the actions that I've taken in response to the emergency proclamation, and that would be the continued adjustments to our operations and the deployment of personnel. Confirmation, uh, the council is, um, approving the, uh, continuation of the, or getting underway with the State, Safe Streets Initiative. Um, determining if council wishes to provide direct assistance to small businesses via grants, and if council is interested tonight, um, there, we, we have a resolution that would allow the appropriation of funds, um, to San Mateo County Strong in an amount determined by council, um, prepared for this meeting, so we could do that tonight. Um, we'd also like confirmation about the Downtown Opportunity Sites project schedule. And then finally, for next week, we do plan on having the weekly COVID-nineteen update, but we also, um, are gonna put another agenda item on, uh, to talk about development and community outreach. You know, going back to my, you know, the, the second slide of this presentation, we're talking about, you know, not feeling like we're gonna be getting back to normal for quite some time and, and having a, a lot of projects in the pipeline that, uh, need to have community outreach. We really wanna come and have a focused conversation next week about how do we, how do we handle effective community outreach in, in sort of what's gonna be a, a new normal for us for some time. And so that'll be on, as planned for next week's agenda. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Drew, are you sure you were busy enough this week?
No.
Man, uh, I just, I, I, I can't even open it up yet without acknowledging the incredible work that's been put in by you and by staff to bring forward all of these things to us. Um, I, I just have to give kudos to you, to everybody, the folks who are in the EOC, the folks who are working from home, the essential workers, everybody. Um, thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing, because it, it, it makes a difference. Lots of people are in their homes right now, and they don't know, um, how to respond. And what we're doing, whether it's the Streets Initiative, or whether it's making sure we're gonna keep the lights on, or making sure that we're providing the essential services, I, I can't thank you enough. And, and you highlighted towards the end that one of the things that we really care about is listening to the public when it comes to the projects that are moving forward. And, and that's absolutely a, a priority. So thank you for all of that, for the entire presentation, and for all the work that went into preparing it for tonight. With that having been said, I wanna open it up to questions from my colleagues. Uh, who has a question first? Go ahead, Eric. Eric, you're still muted. Let me unmute you.
No, I got it. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, Drew, uh, just a quick question on, on the funds for the small business assistance. Um, have, has your team, uh, been able to do any analysis on, like, what the demand's gonna be? Or is it just unlimited demand, basically, in terms of?
You know, I, we, we haven't been able to do any, any specific, um, on the, on the demand. We, we were, you know, certainly reticent to, to put something out there to say, hey, would you, would you be interested in this if we did it? Because I think it would set the expectation that we were gonna do it, so I didn't wanna get too far ahead of things. But my, my guess is that there's gonna be, uh, pretty heavy demand. Um, I think as you saw from the eligibility criteria, though, um, I think there is a focus on making sure the money is going to, to businesses that have been viable and have some expectation of continuing to be able to, to operate, but, but we don't have a, a great feel for what the, what the overall demand is gonna be. With that said, um, Roseanne Faust from SAMCDA has been gracious enough to join us, and, um, I, I would like to give her the floor for a minute, because maybe she can provide some insight on, on what they're seeing.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor Gothels and City Manager Corbett. I wanna thank you, actually, for asking me to join the meeting. I wanna thank the City of San Mateo for all the outreach that you have been doing to everyone, to all of your residents, including those that operate small business. We see that the demand for this program is gonna far exceed the dollars that we are gonna have available. That doesn't mean that we're gonna stop raising dollars. Um, we know that there is just such a strong interest in it. To put it in context, the million dollars that the Board of Supervisors has allocated for small business grant assistance amounts to ten-thousand-dollar grants for exactly one hundred businesses. We have over seventy-five thousand small businesses in San Mateo County that kind of fall into the small business category, um, not necessarily the zero to, or two to ten FTE, but there is a strong demand. So while I can't answer your question straight up, I can tell you that what we're hearing is that this man will see the dollars.
Uh, can I ask you a, a similar question then? Uh, first off, thank you for all the, the work you are doing, uh, and your leadership here as well. Uh, that's appreciated very much. So, um, my question is, has there been any analysis or studies done on what would generate the most good, or maybe save the most businesses versus, um, ten-thousand dollars each, or double that and like five-thousand dollars each, or something like that? Or, you know, perhaps even less, at twenty-thousand dollars? Like, has there been any studies on the optimal amount that can do the most good?
So, thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. We were looking at programs that have been set up in Seattle, uh, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Silicon Valley, and we were looking at grants up to ten-thousand dollars that would cover, uh, rent, mortgage, payroll, health insurance, to keep people employed for approximately a two-month period. So that's why we landed on the number that we did, because in averaging those expenses for a small business, that, that's where we came up with the up to ten-thousand dollars.
Great. Thank you. I'll let my other councilmembers jump in. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, you have questions?
Hi, I had a question, Roseanne, about, um, about the criteria and asking about the, um, whether an applicant had applied to other funding. Uh, do you, do, are you concerned about, um, about sort of like double-dipping, um, in, in, you know, some, some small subset of, of businesses, you know, being able to take advantage of multiple pots of, of re, funding and relief while others, um, uh, you know, get nothing and the pot is drained? And how, how do we manage, you know, that, that aspect of, um, of the criteria and vetting?
So that's the beauty. Thank you, Councilmember Lee, for the question. That's the beauty of having San Mateo Credit Union's underwriters reviewing the applications, because they know what else is available. While we didn't wanna make that a, a hard and fast criteria, it is gonna be looked at in the overall, um, pot of money that's available. Uh, we were very cognizant of scams and frauds and all of those type of, of bad actions happening out there. We were also careful to evaluate how there's been tremendous pressure on federal and state programs, uh, through the SBA, and that's the idle, the Economic Disaster Loans, as well as the Paycheck Protection. I'm sure many of you heard on the news today that paycheck protection allows for companies up to five hundred employees, and, uh, one business located in the City of San Mateo chose to give the paycheck protection back to better benefit small businesses. So, um, there's a lot of, what I would say, checks and balances in kind of an awareness of where people are able to access funds and where they are, and where and kind of an awareness of where people are able to access funds and where they are and where kind of the holdups of that. So we are very cognizant of that. We just didn't want to make it a hard and fast criteria. Because you might have a situation where someone has borrowed dollars through their bank, through a line of credit with a business, through friends and family. And so we wanted to be flexible enough that we could benefit the most number of businesses. And when you're looking at designing a program from the ground up, which is what this is, and looking at twenty-one different jurisdictions, we, we kind of chose the best criteria out of what was out there and what we saw working.
That's really reassuring. My second question to you, Roseanne, is, is looking at the need of, of our childcare providers. And, you know, this is a council priority that was identified last year and then again carried over this year for us in our strategic planning process. And, you know, and I know that you know that, that childcare is essential for our economic recovery. And a lot of these businesses are barely hanging on. And the funding that has been designated is largely channeled to pay for direct costs like PPE and not, not in any way supporting bridge funding or gap funding to help the businesses themselves even stay alive. And so, you know, as I'm thinking about the need for childcare, us pre-COVID-19 being in an extreme childcare shortage at the county level. And then, you know, looking at the fifty-eight licensed childcare centers in the City of San Mateo, the, the hundred and eighteen licensed small and large family childcare centers in, in the city that are home-based. And then in a competing pot that might, may or not, may not qualify for the criteria that's been set up through the Small Business Loan Program. You know, they might very well not have two FTE employees, you know, full-time equivalent employees. It might just be a one-person show. You know, how do we, you know, what, what is your vision in terms of where the, where child could, childcare as an industry, as an important segment of our sector fits into this, this specific fund and this channel? Or does it? And maybe do we need to be looking at, you know, other, other foundation opportunities?
So one of the things, so Councilmember Lee, thank you for framing that. One of the things that the county, Samtita, the credit union all talked about initially when we were setting this up is how tight and how loose do you make the criteria? And do you prioritize essential businesses that have remained open? And I think about things like childcare. I think about our small family-owned grocery stores. I think about our family-owned coffee shops or restaurants or, I mean, and the list on that goes on. So it was kind of a question as to what criteria fits across the board? And how can we look at all the cities kind of in, in cooperation? And say, if there is a childcare operator that fits the criteria with a, with a business license, with the other things that we laid out with revenues, which, you know, two to ten full-time equivalent employees, under two-point-five million in gross sales, demonstrated ability to come out of this, all the paperwork, then they should, because what's going to happen, just so you know, is tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors, we are keeping our fingers crossed that the resolution with the San Mateo Credit Union and the county is passed. And then the criteria is passed. And then the heavy marketing and awareness campaign begins from that moment forward through the weekend. And our goal for opening the online applications for the business grants is Monday, the twenty, so a week from today, Monday, the twenty-seventh. That is the goal. And so having the childcare operators, having the businesses have all their paperwork and everything ready. We've also worked to identify other sources of funds for what we would call the self-employed independent contractors and the ten ninety-nine. So that falls into sole proprietor, self, self-employed bucket. Like, what else is available for childcare operators? If the city wants to commit funds to the San Mateo County Strong Initiative, then there, if you had a, wanted a consideration for certain types of businesses for the City of San Mateo, then that's a council policy decision. And so we didn't want to, because every city has kind of a different framework for what they consider essential businesses. And we had to make the criteria that from an underwriting and fraud perspective could be bulletproof with the funds that both the county has given, that have come through the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, as well as city funds. So we wanted to be really careful of that. That's not the, probably the answer that you were looking for. But when you're planning this out for twenty-one different jurisdictions with different needs, we had a base. And then if cities wanted to earmark something specifically, and we're hearing that from private foundations too, that they might want to, what we're calling geo-target their funds. So we're trying to be flexible and adaptable and recognize that every community has its own character.
Thank you. It's, I, having, having gotten as far as we have, considering that this is all, as you said, built from the ground up, is, is really tremendous work. And to your credit, Roseanne, so thank you so much. I have a couple other questions for Drew. Or should we finish with Roseanne?
No, go ahead. Keep going. Thank you so much, Roseanne, for, for those answers. It's wonderful. We are so lucky to have you and to have Samtita. I would like to pile on with Roseanne for a minute. Okay, okay. Go ahead, Rick. I just want to say, Roseanne, that I, I am, I can't tell you how proud I am of the job that you and your team have done in, in a very short period of time of getting this whole program as together as it is, which is, looks like it's definitely heading in a direction where we're going to be able to work to preserve the retail character of our communities, which is, I think, equally as important as the other characters that we've been looking at and talking about. The ability for us to be able to go back to where we have businesses for the people who are unemployed now to go back to. That is key. We have to have those employers in place. So I think I highly commend you. Thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Councilmember Lee, you have another question?
Yes. So this is a question for Drew. I had, I, I'm so excited that we are redeploying our, our staff for, for the purposes of supporting census outreach. And, and I think that that's an excellent direction. I, I was wondering about tapping into the county's very large pool of volunteers. Last count, I think they were at a thousand eight hundred volunteers. And, and many of those folks, you know, might want to do something, you know, over the phone and not necessarily in person. And so I was wondering, you know, to what extent, are you aware that that is a resource that we can, we can utilize for census outreach, given the county's, the county's full participation and, and support for census?
You know, I don't know for certain. I'd be speculating. But if I could speculate, I would say that they are, you know, they, they are very interested in, in the census. Each, each time that the city managers meet with, with County Manager Callagie, one of the updates he gives is, is where San Mateo County is with respect to its census numbers. And we're, we're second in the state and he is pushing us hard to catch up with our neighbors to the south in Santa Clara County. So I think they're looking at, at any resources that they can find to help with the outreach. So we just wanted to provide, you know, provide our resources if they could be used.
Please tell everyone you know that Belmont is ahead of us and we cannot let that stand.
Well, um, well, I just, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying. And I, I guess I would just, I would just hope that we could also tap into that pool. Especially if we can bring Samtean volunteers into the fold of the census outreach. You know, a lot of folks, you know, could easily be trained virtually. And, you know, to the extent that we can, we can multiply our effort through the work of volunteers, it seems to, you know, it seems like a win-win. And then, and then I guess, you know, looking, looking at the map for Save Streets Initiative, you know, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of this idea. I, I'm really.
Before we go on to that, can we continue on with this part first before we go on to the Save Streets part?
Yes.
Go ahead. Councilmember Papin, you have something on this, on the small business loans?
Yeah, we can do that first. I appreciate it. So, Roseanne, I just have a quick question for you. And it relates to some of the private money that's out there. And what are you hearing about that? Like, for example, the sales score small business loans? If we as a city can't accommodate some of what's coming in, how's it looking for these other private sector loans? Because you're kind of in the know. And I thought I'd take advantage of you being here to get, to get some insight.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Papin. We actually were going to put something into our daily newsletter today. And it's Save Small Business out of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. And they already closed their program. So what is very concerning to me, and we posted something about Facebook, Small Business Assistance Grant. But I can tell you, right before we sent out our daily kind of briefing, we checked it to make sure. Because we're seeing that happen more and more. Things open and they immediately close. And that worries me frankly. And I think what I, what we're going to encourage, if the city chooses to put in city funds, we have an idea of asking you as elected officials to say to your community, the City of San Mateo has put in X, let's say three hundred thousand dollars to the small San Mateo County Strong Fund. Can our community match that for us? Because if you, if you match three hundred thousand, that gives you six hundred thousand, that saves sixty more small businesses, for example. That, that's kind of how I'm doing the math, is every hundred thousand is ten more businesses. So can we get city matches happening? Because we are seeing the other grant funding closing out there.
Diane, I have volunteered to help make some of these calls. And if you want to share in the load, I'm happy to talk to you about what businesses we can each reach out to in order to ask for that kind of money. I think it's, it's extremely important. And we're in a position where we as a city are putting our money where our mouth is. And, and we need to look to our partners, our, our private partners. You're always looking for the private dollars to, to match those funds, to do the most good, as you said.
Well, and I think if I may, because we all got to sing Roseanne's praises. She's been nothing short of heroic here. I don't know if the general public is, is quite aware of what you do, Roseanne. And not only that, but you've been such a positive light in all this because it's a scary damn time. And I really feel like not only are you a very hardworking person, but you, you've given people a lot of hope. So I appreciate the tenor with which you deliver your message. But I, I, I like this idea, Mayor, about matching funds. Because what we're setting up has some real specific guidelines. So then we can go to a donor and say, this is how you could specifically match exactly what we're going to do, whether it's childcare, Councilmember Lee, or whomever else we want to, you know, kind of focus in on for these grants. So let's get to work. I'm excited. Thank you so much.
My only hesitation to call it matching funds is that some of these people were asking for more money than the city's putting up.
Love it. Love it.
We need to call these opportunities. Absolutely. We, we're all, we're all in this together. And we're, we're trying to get as much help from the people who have the resources. And now, now is the time. Now is absolutely the time. With that in mind, have we all, have we all thanked, I know we've all, it has been said that Roseanne is fantastic, but we haven't all said it yet. So if everyone needs another opportunity, let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to kick it over to Councilmember Lee to ask the next question on the streets.
Thank you. So, yes, so back to Save Streets. And, yes, gushing appreciation for you, Roseanne. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But back to Save Streets, I, you know, I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out that it looked like a lot of the pilot areas are, are all west of, of 101. And, and I just thought that it would be helpful to just reiterate how, you know, what were the criteria that we were looking at? Because I, I know that, you know, I, like, that's, that's been a reoccurring concern from our communities in North and South Shoreview and the, the Lagoon. Is, you know, is where, you know, making sure that there's geographic equity in the decisions that we're making. And that, and that we, this is not an oversight. This was based on a, a thought-out process and established criteria. So I just wanted to make sure that that was given some airtime.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can address that a little bit. We have, we did look at areas east of the 101. We, ultimately, those neighborhoods under, under these times. So obviously, they had, they had a lot of cut-through problems, especially North Shoreview when the economy was up and running full blast. But normally, those neighborhoods, because of their, their geographic location, are not really cut-through neighborhoods. There's not really places to, to cut through. And so focusing a pilot section there, I think, didn't make as much sense as it did some of the, in some of the other areas where we, we did see good opportunities to close the streets to, to, through traffic. So they, they were evaluated. We are continuing to, to evaluate different sites. And we just felt like these were the five best sites to get the biggest bang for the buck in terms of hitting the multifamily areas that had a greater need for space.
Thank you so much. And then, you know, coming back to the outreach that Jennifer Chen and, and her team, her task force has been doing, I'm curious to, you know, just to, if she has any updates from the childcare perspective, you know, with the ten businesses that she did connect with? And if that, if there is some, you know, some color she can put on this issue for us in terms of how our childcare businesses are doing and what needs they have?
Very low. Is that any better? Okay. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Lee. So we reached out to the childcare facility. So most, they are closed. And even upon opening, they're having, they're not sure how to reopen. They're having some, well-conserved business continuity issues, like what kind of PPEs? How do they, how do they provide safe, how do they make sure that their teachers feel safe to return to the workforce? So I, I basically directed some, some resources with Sacramento that deals with this. And I can speak with, with the childcare, with the county's foresees and see if they have even better sort of, they're planning such things to kind of inform the childcare providers. And yes, they're also concerned about money. And many of them have not applied for PPP in time, and they're lost a very many. It's all, it's both the dollars as well as how do they start once it reopens?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So, so I just, you know, this is not exactly a question, but an update to the council, which is not in the right order of things. But, but I just, I just learned today that the Silicon Valley Community Foundation will be announcing and rolling out a specific fund for childcare centers and, and daycare providers. And, and it has been funded through a private donation in three counties, a hundred thousand dollars per county, including San Mateo County. And so I would just, I would just like to put it on, you know, on the table in terms of our consideration that, you know, if we're, if this is, you know, this is something that, that we really, that we want to see remain a priority, that we believe is an investment that will pay dividends when we're looking at the economic recovery plan. I think that it's worth looking into that specific fund. And maybe that's a different, it's a different approach and a different conversation than, than the contribution we make today to the, the, the credit union and, and the San Mateo Strong Fund. So I just want to throw that out there as, you know, as some, some more, you know, more things to, to consider. So I just want to throw that out there as, you know, as, and some, some more, you know, more things to, to consider.
That's a good point. And can I ask Drew, or maybe somebody on the call, maybe Rich? Uh, do we, do we still have funds in our, um, in our childcare fund that could be deployed during this critical time in a different way than we originally anticipated? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we, uh, there, there is funding in that fund. I'm not sure how much. Uh, we would have to look into, um, if we could use it for that purpose.
I, I think we need it now. It's, it's a critical time to help people bridge the gap. And so if, if that is something that we can do, could we look into tapping into the money that we've already set aside for that purpose? I know, I know in the, in the grand scheme of things, we want to build more childcare centers. We want to make the pie bigger, but right now there's pieces of pie that are falling on the floor if we don't help them out and get them to bridge this gap. So that-
So, hi, hi, this is Kohar. I'm just to chime in on the childcare fund. Um, by law, we can only use it for capital, not operations. Um, but we can, we can look at it further. It's an impact fee, and it's, it has, it's restricted in use.
Okay, let's figure out exactly how it's restricted, I guess.
Well, then maybe it's our consideration when we're looking at, um, at the repurposing of the CDGB, um, fund. And, you know, I think initially we were talking about it 100% going to Samaritan House for rental assistance. And, and maybe, you know, maybe it's, it's, you know, maybe it's looking at, uh, earmarking this, uh, a portion of it for, for this other, um, for the daycare purpose, the childcare.
Can, uh, can I go back to your point, uh, Councilmember Lee? Is it, is it a current need, or is it the bridge, the bridge funding when, um, the shelter-in-place order is lifted, that there will be a critical need at that time?
It's both. From, from everything that I, that I've heard and that I'm, that I'm seeing, so, you know, so thinking about, for example, the, um, the at-home daycare providers who, who predominantly provide infant care, which is, I, you know, which is in a huge shortage, they are relying on their, um, their enrollment to cover the cost of, you know, keeping a roof over their own head. So we're looking at, you know, the compounding issue of housing insecurity on top of, um, just business continuity, and then not knowing, you know, how long the shelter-in-place, um, you know, order is going to continue, what their enroll, their future enrollment will look like, um, and, and even, you know, what, what or if they will have the tools, um, and to, to actually come back into operation. So-
I think we're getting too, too far, uh, afoul of this topic, but I do want to explore that more, especially, Kohar, even with the restrictions that you're saying apply to that funding, I do think that in order to keep these, these places in business, I mean, if, if they go out of business, would we then, would they then be eligible to put them into business to become a provider? Because I think that's the situation that we're presented with. And, uh, and I do think that there are resources right now to help people with the, the childcare that they need for essential workers. I do, I think that the, the need is coming once the shelter-in-place is lifted and non-essential people are going to work. That's, that's where I, I think that the need will be even greater. Um-
Can I just add, just really quickly to that, that one of the, one of the driving factors, I think, that really does need to be considered is that when these businesses go out of business, which many of them will, there is a huge lead time for them to restart. It's not that simple. Um, that, you know, licensing, um, and, and acquiring their space, uh, is, is, you know, is a huge burden and, and will require a lot of time. So it's, um, so after the fact funding is, um, you know, is, is really not going to resolve the, the question of like, how, how do we make sure that they stay in existence? It's, it's do or die at this moment.
Can I, can I translate that into, um, into the, the term that we heard earlier from Councilmember Pappen, which is that we will get much more bang for our buck if we keep them in business rather than let them go out of business and try to start them back up again. So that's a, that's a good point.
This is a lifeline.
Fantastic. Let's-
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
We'll work on that some more. Rich, what do you have to say? Please add to the conversation.
Yes, uh, the childcare, um, balance. So the council had awarded just over a half a million dollars in childcare loans to a number of facilities throughout the city. Uh, there was a balance of money of $2 million. Uh, once the grants were awarded, that left about $1.3 million in the pot. Uh, we've collected $89,000 of additional childcare funds since then. So we have about $1.4 million in funds that are available.
That's a fantastic resource that we should make use of, even if we have to, um, pass new laws to use those resources in ways that were not originally anticipated. Uh, anyway. Yes, Drew?
I was just going to say, we, we will, we will look into what we can do, and, uh, we'll, we'll report back next week.
I appreciate it. Um, that was an incredibly productive conversation, everyone. Um, Drew needs our authority to do all the things that he asked for. Uh, would you like us to explicitly go through your list at this point to, to give you that authority? Um, or would you like to pull up the last screen of your PowerPoint so that we can-
I'm so sorry.
We do have some, uh, public comment. So before we vote, we should go to the public comment. And Madam Clerk, thank you so much for reminding me. Uh, how much public comment do we have?
Uh, I just wanted to mention for the record that we had, um, since Packet Production, five additional comments received by 4:00 PM today, and those were provided to council. And for anyone who wrote in to the clerk email or the city council email, that is part of the official record. We have multiple ways, um, we're, we're using all our channels for communication on this item right now. So the first one we have is a call-in. If your phone number ends in 0180, if you could, um, star six and unmute yourself, we'll take comments from you first. I see you're unmuted now. Please go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Um, I particularly am talking about also, uh, the sustainable city, uh, suggestion, where we were opening up the streets to go one way and then the other. I think this is very good, because when we had a sustainable city program, uh, going on for seven years, it was by community that they actually had rendering of how those streets would look. Um, I would like us to continue to not, um, look at cars coming into downtown, but rather than making the city a sustainable city, because we do have a lot of projects going on. We have 101, um, with the new HOV lanes going on. We've got Poplar Avenue being closed off on the south. We have the Caltrain, the Caltrain high-speed, uh, track changing. Um, so I would really like at this time that the city, um, council and the Pl- Planning Commission not look at additional programs, um, because we do have so much going on, and we have, our funding has been changed due to the coronavirus with the tax structure. Thank you.
Ms. Pennen, thank you so much for your public comment and for your email. We appreciate it.
I noted that was Diana Pettit for the record. And, um, Diane, I am removing you now. Next, we have a call-in from a phone number ending in 3362.
Hi, this is Evelyn Divers. I'm Housing Leadership Council. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. I just want to commend the council on their excellent work, and, uh, I know you're making some really difficult decisions. I just want to make sure that you're, um, are keeping in mind that, you know, we're looking at a tsunami of evictions and foreclosures if we don't figure out at the federal and state level how to repay the rents that people are not paying right now. Uh, so please keep that in mind. Um, and now more than ever, we need to be thinking of ways to house our essential workers. Housing is obviously healthcare. Housing is infrastructure. So as you're looking at, uh, difficult decisions, please, 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 keep funding affordable housing. Thank you for coming up with great creative ways for us to be included in this conversation. I am, uh, very impressed by the city and the city's ability to take comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Divers, for your comment.
Thank you. I'm removing you now. I don't see any other caller lend. We will check one more time. We'll move on to e-comment now. Uh, there are three responses, but one of the callers was, uh, already on the call. So we will go first with, um, a response from Adam Lorraine. And he says, "I urge council support of the Save Streets Initiative proposal brought by the city manager and staff. It seems like a logical step, given the direct, in the right direction, that won't disrupt essential vehicle, but can allow our residents in these areas to walk and bike outside more safely and comfortably. Should it pass, I'd ask the city manager and staff to please check on these from time to time, gather that neighborhood input from those outside of Bay Meadows, as was mentioned, and be open to considering more such no-through-traffic areas in other neighborhoods if these pilots do work well. Thank you to the council for being open to this and asking staff for a proposal. Thank you to the city manager and staff for quick responsiveness and for a good proposal. I also support essentially everything else that has been proposed in this update. Thank you again for your hard work on considering funding thoughtful small business relief and recovery through partnerships, redeployment, short census support, and more." He says, "Thanks" to the city clerk for reading this. Okay. Um, thank you, Adam.
You really need more public comment. I, I just don't feel like we get enough public comment.
And Diane Pettit wrote in, but it was a repeat of what she had said on her phone call. So the next one is Jan Stokely, um, who, "Dear Mayor and city council members, on behalf of people with developmental disabilities, housing choices urge, urges your support for the downtown opportunity sites. This project will address the city's significant shortfall in meeting its affordable housing goals. In addition, we urge you to support a preference for 20 of the apartments for people with developmental disabilities. The project's proximity to transit, shopping, and services make it an ideal location for creating inclusive housing for people with developmental disabilities. Targeting of some units for the special needs population would reduce the parking and traffic impact of the project since these adults do not drive and own cars. Targeting of some units to people with developmental disabilities will also enable the city to meet one of its unmet housing element goals. Finally, it is worth noting that the current pandemic has revealed that people living in segregated institutional settings like nursing homes and licensed care facilities are at a greater risk of illness than people able to shelter in place in their own apartments. We need to create opportunities in San Mateo for more residents with developmental disabilities to have access to an affordable home of their own with services provided by the Golden Gate Regional Center." Thank you. So I'm going to refresh one more time. There are no additional e-commerce. I do not see anyone else on the call. So we also had a submittal, um, of seven short, um, all around two minutes, video comments. So I need to go to a different computer to launch that. It'll just take me 30 seconds, so talk amongst yourselves for a moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Our city clerk is doing that. Um, I just have one comment about the Save Streets, and I'm delighted that, um, they are structured the way they are, and they really reinforce this idea of common sense as well, because I think that's going to be a key part of it. We're only going to be able to do so much. So I, I was really pleased to see what we ultimately came up with. And I would like to see if we can do it in Shoreview or North Shoreview. I think that would be, there's a lot of families there, and I think they'd really benefit from it. But I just figured, well, might as well, the hour is ticking on. I thought I'd take advantage of this 30-second lull. Thank you.
We, we have an amazing staff, and yes, we're trying to do the most good for everybody. And, um, no, North Shoreview is not forgotten. I had a long, uh, conversation with people in North Shoreview today about, uh, how much we, we love North Shoreview and care about them and represent them.
This is the, I'm ready to launch the video if you're ready.
Sure.
Dear Commissioners, my name is Rafael Reyes, and I'm here with my son Mateo. I'm a 20-year homeowner of the City of San Mateo. We have had the good fortune of living in Bay Meadows, uh, and I love the city. Uh, frankly, it's a terrific place, uh, to live, if you can afford to live here. Um, there's an urgent housing crisis, and I want to strongly encourage you to please support this very important affordable housing project. Uh, there's, uh, urgent need, uh, for these kinds of projects and, and, uh, giving the opportunity for, uh, affordable housing to those most in need. Dear Commissioners, my name is Rafael- Rafael Reyes, and I'm here with my son Mateo. I'm a 20-year home- owner of the City of San Mateo. We have had the good fortune of living in Bay Meadows. Uh, and I love the city. Uh, frankly, it's a terrific place, uh, to live, if you can afford to live here. Um, there's an urgent housing crisis, and I want to strongly encourage you to please support this very important affordable housing project. Uh, there's, uh, urgent need, uh, for these kinds of projects and, and, uh, giving the opportunity for, uh, affordable housing to those most in need, uh, including, uh, healthcare workers, teachers, emergency responders, and other hard-working members of our community. In fact, it was just a few weeks ago before the shelter-in-place, uh, we had a playdate with one of, uh, Mateo's, uh, friends at school, a local school at Fiesta Gardens. And, uh, talking to, um, his parents, uh, learned that they were considering moving because they couldn't afford to live here. Uh, and this is a common, uh, problem, you know, she's a, she's a teacher, and just, it's just too expensive. Um, so I want to, again, encourage you to give you, uh, for you to give your strong support for this essential project, and, uh, make sure that members of our community have a place to live, uh, here. Uh, this is especially important, uh, with the, um, global pandemic and the economic consequences of, uh, that are occurring in the community. Um, not having adequate housing is, uh, one of, of the ways that, uh, viruses spread. Um, and, or otherwise people are forced to live, uh, at great distances and, uh, increase traffic substantially in the community. This will strengthen our downtown by, um, allowing people to easily get to their jobs and also support local businesses. Uh, it's really a great opportunity and encourage your strong support. Thank you very much.
Hello, Planning Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Reyes. I live at 2831 Olivares Lane in San Mateo. I'm respectfully asking you to support MidPenn's Downtown San Mateo Opportunity Sites project with the full 225 affordable homes. Uh, our family has been impacted by the affordable housing crisis. We have lost a beloved nanny for our son who couldn't afford to stay because of the housing crisis. And beyond just the personal impacts on me, I think we've all seen in this recent crisis just how essential and important some of our lower-income workers are. I think about how hard folks are working at the grocery stores to make sure that we can all have healthy food. And, um, everyone deserves an affordable place to live, and there's a huge affordable housing shortage. Um, please, please, uh, support this project and make sure that all 225 homes move forward. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Ken Abreu. I'm a 36-year resident of San Mateo. And I strongly support this 225 affordable unit MidPenn project in downtown San Mateo. And I ask that you move it along in a timely manner to get it approved, so- And I ask that you move it along in a timely manner to get it approved so its critical housing can be built as soon as possible. We know we have a crisis on the peninsula with the housing jobs imbalance. We know that that's led to unaffordability of housing for many, many very important workers. We know it's led to traffic congestion from people having to commute from long distances, impacting their lives and in the environment. We know with this pandemic that many critical workers, whether it's nurses, or people working at grocery stores, or other critical jobs, can't afford to live in San Mateo, and that this impacts their ability to deliver the services that we vitally need here. So I ask you to please move this project along in a timely manner. It's a great project. Make sure that it goes ahead under its full size of 225 units, and thank you for hearing me out.
Greetings to the City Council. My name is John Taster. I am a San Mateo resident and a homeowner since 1982. I'm speaking in favor of the downtown opportunity affordable housing project to be developed for the city by MidPenn. I'm asking that you do not delay the process that has already been underway for some time, which will lead to the approval and the development of this critically needed housing. This is a uniquely significant opportunity for San Mateo, as it includes 225 affordable housing units, many more units than the average affordable housing project. It will provide quality homes for an unusually large number of our most vulnerable population, and it will add a significant amount of critically needed parking in the downtown area. It's a win for all. As construction costs in general increase, we need to avoid any delays that could jeopardize this development. We need to avoid unnecessary additional costs, and importantly, we cannot add to the continuing hardship of those depending upon this project for housing stability and to be able to work in the community they serve. My professional career and my volunteer activities have shown me the value of quality affordable housing and the positive impact it has on the residents in those projects, as well as the impact on the community itself. All positive. This is an excellent project for San Mateo and our residents. I urge you to not delay the approval process and allow this critical project to move forward. Thank you for your ongoing leadership and support for affordable housing in our city.
My name is Nathan Chan. I live in Millbrae at 151 El Camino Real, and I strongly support this project proposal by MidPenn Housing. I originally became involved as a housing activist because I couldn't see how California could solve its climate change challenges without building more housing close to transit, close to Caltrain, close to buses, close to jobs, so that people wouldn't have to drive to get to work. This project certainly qualifies. It's right next to downtown San Mateo, it's right next to the Caltrain station, so it gives the residents options besides driving.
Members of the City Council, this is Robert Whitehair. I've lived in San Mateo for 36 years. I urge you to immediately move forward with a schedule for the downtown opportunity site. There is not a need for a delay. It's been well-studied at many study sessions with the council. It's on the planning commission study session on April 28th, and has been the subject of many neighborhood sessions. The 225 units for low-income housing are badly needed by our teachers, firefighters, and those people who perform all the important tasks in our community. Please adopt it as soon as you can, and please move forward on Monday night. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gothles and honorable City Council members. My name is Rich Hedges, and I reside at 904 Werfside Road in San Mateo, California. I'd much rather be with you tonight, but that's not possible because of the current epidemic. But I needed to speak with you tonight to let you know that I support the 225 affordable homes at the site in San Mateo on the agenda tonight. I respectfully ask you to move forward with MidPenn's Downtown San Mateo Opportunity Site in a timely manner. Every one of these 225 deeply affordable homes will provide secure shelter to people in need. I put myself through undergraduate school and graduate school as a grocery clerk. I have represented grocery clerks for 44 years. Grocery clerks make about $44,000 per year before taxes if they work full-time, and they can't live in San Mateo without BMR housing. Our grocery clerks, janitors, teachers, nurses, and other essential workers deserve to live in the communities they serve. I love downtown San Mateo and want to make sure those who work downtown can live close by. It is good for downtown to have workers who live, shop, and recreate where they live. The affordability crisis affects everyone, especially the most vulnerable populations. This proposal maximizes the potential of land by providing as many affordable homes close to transit as possible. Its serving low-income individuals and families also reduces a need for additional parking while creating parking for downtown. The more homes we can build, the more neighbors and diversity we'll have, the better off we'll be as a community. As we are learning during the COVID-19 health emergency, secure housing is health care. Please help these worker heroes by creating housing they have a possibility of attaining. Thank you for your continued leadership and courage around affordable housing in San Mateo. We appreciate the city's use of innovation to create inclusive, transparent process for decision-making at this time. We are very fortunate to live in a community like San Mateo who find ways to solve problems. Thank you very much for listening to this video.
The Downtown Menlo Park Library Project.
So I will mention to anybody that, first of all, that was crystal clear to everybody at home who was watching. If you're watching through our website, the sound was much better quality than it was for us hearing it. I switched over to listen to the broadcast through the website, so people at home, it was crystal clear. Thank you so much, Patrice, for making that available to our residents, and I'm so glad that people took advantage of it. No more public comment, is that right, Madam Clerk?
That is correct, sir.
Excellent. Close public comment period, bring it back to the council, ask Drew to put up your PowerPoint if you feel we need it. But I felt as though, as we were going through, there was unanimous consent to continue to give Drew the authority to confirm all the action that he's taken and to bring back the item that we talked about for, where are we? This is the authority, or this is the approval that you're asking for, corrector?
Yes, and if you want to do, if council wishes to do direct assistance to small businesses via grants, I need a number.
Reminder with the CDBG funding was?
So the CDBG funding was $440,000, but that was for Samaritan House for rental assistance. So this would be from the general fund.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Could we up it if we wanted to at a later date, too? Or would you prefer just to have it all done right now with whatever we can do?
There's no, there's no harm, and it's not any more difficult to increase it later if council wishes to start with a smaller number to begin with and see how it goes.
And Drew, you would agree this is an investment in sources of revenue for the city. We want to keep these businesses open. It means the world to residents, but it's also the lifeblood of local organizations as well.
Yes.
And I would add that the sooner we get our small businesses back on track, the sooner we all get on track.
We are.
Worth our while. But I interrupted you, Rick, sorry.
Yeah, well, I have a question. Drew, if anybody has looked into, actually, it says we should expect to seek this kind of aid right away. I mean, I think it would be significant.
I'm sorry, I missed a portion of your question. Could you repeat it, please?
Sure. I said, do you think you have a, the businesses might be seeking this kind of aid immediately? I think we have pent-up demand.
Oh, certainly. I believe that if this, you know, if we offer this up, that there will be a greater demand for the grants than there is supply of money.
I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to be heard on whether we're going to give this money and how much. So. I would be in support. And I would be in support enough to help at least 50 businesses. I think there is more than that much demand, and this is a good start. Okay, so I hear that to be 10,000 per business, 50 businesses, $500,000. Is that your recommendation, Rick? That's my recommendation, yes. I heard Eric start a sentence there. Go ahead, Eric.
Just clearing my throat. But I question for Drew. You know, given the conversation we just had about our budgets and everything that's coming down the path, and given how important this is to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help our businesses, did staff have a recommended kind of starting point? I like Councilmember Papin's idea of initially, like, maybe allocating a certain amount of funds and then coming back to it as we learn more and as we kind of see what demand is. Do you have any starting point that you would recommend?
I think last week I mentioned somewhere between 300 and $500,000, and that sort of factors in our financial picture as is, and also goes to Mayor Gothles' comments about really looking at this as an investment in our community and in our small businesses. So that was what, that was what we had in mind.
Would you guys give me a second so that we can hear the, a final public comment came in, and I think we should hear that before we finish our conversation. Go ahead, Patrice.
Sorry, thank you. I was in a different computer in a different room. We do get one more. It's from Emma Schleels at Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. Thank you so much for pursuing the Safe Streets Initiative. The Know Through Traffic program will provide additional space for families to get outside and recreate while maintaining a safe social distance. It is also great to hear about the social media campaign and the public signage, people are asking, signage asking people to slow down and keep people on the streets safe. We look forward to seeing the rollout and are here to help the city implement in any way you need. Thank you again for this and all the work you're doing during this crisis.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Patrice. Thank you, Patrice, for running to multiple rooms on multiple computers just so that we can make sure that people are heard. I appreciate that very much. With that, I'll close the public comment period again and bring it back to the council. I'm hearing some comments. We're starting to circle around a number. Eric, is 300, 2500 a number you're comfortable with? Do you want to start at 3? What do you want to do?
My inclination, I mean, it's as good a guess as anyone's, but my inclination would be to start at 3 with the idea that we can come back for more. And also to, it really struck me as a good idea, I don't know who had this idea, but to kind of structure this as more like an NPR challenge grant, where of course, of course, you know, our intent is to make sure these funds get out, but maybe add an additional step like they do on with KQED pledge drives, where if the amount of money is not matched, then they have to kind of come back for approval or something like that, just to make, just to give those that are going to be talking to our businesses and trying to get their help, to give them a little bit more ammunition for how much we need these funds and how much we need funds, so.
I appreciate that very much. Good idea. As I start to make these calls, I will appreciate it even more. And on that same vein, Drew, do we have tote bags?
Grumdick Radio?
We do, we do have bags.
Tote bags will be available.
Also, Drew, one other, one other idea is just to make sure that these businesses, when they do match these funds, to have some additional exposure, like we'll be thanking them publicly, we'll be, you know, doing anything we can to just express our thanks in this difficult time. That's my thing. I'll say that.
I've been trained by the best, which is to say Roseanne, so believe me, I will be saying things like that. Okay, so let me try to recapture this a little bit. Yes to everything that's on the screen. We all agree on everything that's on the screen, and we look forward to next week having you come back with the community outreach and development conversation, very specifically on the small businesses and grants. I think we all agree that it should be set up sort of as a matching to incentivize our local businesses to donate, and it sounds like we're comfortable with 3 to 5. I would land on 400. I don't know that we're going to be able to find the money to re-up this, but I would, I would be comfortable starting it at 400.
Is it only funded, then, do you believe that you would have matching? Or do you want to make a portion of that 400 matching, and a portion of it would be outright funded by the city?
I mean, if I, I think we could do it pretty much how public radio does it. Our intention is to give all that money out, but there's a little bit added incentive because they're going to have to come back to us. I mean, it's basically a marketing gimmick, but, but don't say that out loud. The idea is not, to not give this money out. The idea is to make businesses that can't afford to give feel like they're doubling their donation, basically.
And they get some free advertising on account. We will give them credit.
Can I ask a question? Because my understanding is, you know, is that from Roseanne's perspective, you know, we, implementing this as expeditiously as possible is really the ultimate goal and will be, will be the lifeline that the businesses need. And so, you know, I totally appreciate the intention in terms of leveraging the fundraising opportunity, and I'm 100% on board with that intention. My question is about the implementation. If, if that implementation, in fact, works against the timeline, you know, then I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's really meeting the need that we're trying to solve.
So let me try to approach that in a slightly different way. I'm all for challenging these, these individuals when I speak to them and telling them that the city has stepped up and now it's their opportunity to step up. The folks who I'm going to be talking to, who I'm making calls to, and who Roseanne is reaching out to, these are not the people who call in to get the tote bag. These are the folks who make, who make the challenge grants themselves. These are the members of the founder's circle who, they get it. They already get it. They know they're going to be asked for this money. They know how many zeros are supposed to be attached to the end of it. And so we, perhaps we don't need the marketing gimmicks for them, for that audience. With that in mind, I will, I will couch it that way when I make these phone calls, but I don't think that we need to vote on it that way tonight.
Okay. I just didn't want it, I didn't want us to get stuck making this a condition of the contribution.
If they want a tote bag, I'll give them a tote bag.
Okay. Okay, yes. So, so I, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, because this is not data-driven in terms of coming up with the amount, and also the amount is, you know, it's coming out of our general fund, but basically it will be rolled into our 10-year budget planning. So, you know, the, the amount that we're talking about in terms of, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. thousand dollars here or there over the course of a 10-year budget, it's negligible. So I don't really see, you know, like, I think it's kind of parsing hairs from the long view. That being said, you know, so I'm flexible and I will go with what, you know, what the council recommends. For me, the consideration is really about, is about the special designation for the childcare providers, and, you know, I'm curious in terms of, you know, this decision here and supporting this decision here, this moment, how that, you know, what that means in terms of the next layer of that conversation in terms of our commitment and investment in the childcare fund.
Okay. I'm going to try to unpack that a little bit. Right now, we're trying to figure out, is it going to be 300, 400, 500? Tonight, I think we're definitely looking at this money as an investment in our small businesses, and much of that money will come back to us by keeping them employed, by keeping those employees employed. The childcare is an essential function that we will, we talked about some funding sources already tonight that we're going to try to be leveraging. No matter how we try to leverage that 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, we've got to find a way to leverage that money that already exists. But you're suggesting that we're going to want to make other donations to the childcare in the future. I don't need to get to that conversation tonight. It's definitely on our minds, but it's not something that we're going to vote on tonight. I hear what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Diane.
So I would make a motion that we, given that we will revisit perhaps some distributions that relate to childcare, I don't want it to be that we're not paying attention to it. For purposes of tonight moving the needle, what I would suggest we do is arrange from 300 to 500,000, and Councilmember Rodriguez's edict is that we get as much matching fund as we can in order to keep, edict, do you like that? In order to move that needle as much as we possibly can. And I agree with you, we're going to go after donors that aren't going to hold us up by any stretch of the imagination. So in practicality, while it could be considered, I don't think practically speaking that's going to happen. So I would suggest a range of three to five with the efforts made towards matching funds for that three to five.
I think Drew wants a number. Yes, Drew wants to know what the first number on that check is. He gets that there's going to be five zeros after it.
300 would be the first. I can't do a range, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we're going to have to make the contribution, and we need to know what the amount is going to be. So it sounds like your interest is, is starting at 300 and, you know, going up to 500, but I would need to know what criteria we were putting in place to go from the three to the five.
It's 20 businesses or 40 businesses is how to look at this, I think.
Why don't we just start with 400?
I'm on board with 400.
Okay, so I'm going to count that as Diane's motion, and Eric seconded it, and I'm going to ask the clerk to call, do a roll call vote to approve everything that Drew said plus $400,000 for small business loans.
And for clarity purposes, that's a resolution with appropriation of $400,000.
Thank you, and that is so clarified, and now we will vote with that clarification.
Okay, Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Mayor Gothel?
Yes.
Five zero.
Excellent. That's the last item on my agenda. Does anybody else have an agenda with other things on it? Do we need a motion on the confirmation? No, huh? I don't object to that. Rick, you just voted. I thought that was on the money. It was. It was all of that included. Okay, so I'm on reports and announcements. Anybody have reports and announcements? Anyone at all?
Keep going. I just say to the public, keep going. We're doing great.
Yep, stay positive, and we're doing the right things. We flatten the curve, all of that. I'll remind everybody one more time that we're celebrating Earth Day this week. 50 amazing years. We've come a long way, but we have a long way to go. Rick, do you want to say anything about how you're going to celebrate Earth Day? Yes, I have to say that I remember the first Earth Day 50 years ago. They took us in a bus from our high school down to Chrissy Field where there had been an oil spill in the bay. They gave us pitchforks and rakes and wheelbarrows, and we threw the hay on top of the oil bobs and picked them up, threw them in a wheelbarrow, and hauled them off, threw them all in a big pile. So we've come a long way since then. There's much more recognition of all of the serious issues that we need to deal with, not least of all sea level rise, such a major one for us here. I want to encourage everybody to pay attention and support every effort that we can make to provide sea level resiliency, sea level rise resiliency. And that said, I think I will take a walk along the bay and celebrate it at that. Fantastic. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Rick, for celebrating each and every year and for continuing to push it I want to throw this out there as sort of a report and announcement. We had our first virtual town hall, which was pretty good, and I think we as council members get bombarded with information. We almost get too much information, and I want to, I want to, I want to say this to my fellow council members. If you think that there are gaps in information and you want to collaborate to try to spread information that you think would be helpful, whether it's talking to the small business community about SBA loans or PPP or anything, I'm happy to join you and we can collaborate to try to get good information out to people. I also want to thank staff tremendously because there was no small feat to put on the virtual town hall, and I thought it was relatively successful, very successful. I was really proud of how it went. And then lastly, I mentioned at the very beginning of the meeting, as I was walking in, I saw the football that Greg St. Clair brought in. It was just such a happy, awesome memory to think of the wounded warriors who came for that football game up at CSM and how, I mean, it was Greg's shining moment. He was so happy. Everybody knew him, and he was so happy. I took so many pictures with him and NFL stars and Snoop, and I was thinking about Snoop as well because he was saying, make sure you put out the milk and cookies tonight. But other than that, I just want to say I love you all very much. Keep doing what you're doing, and I'll see you at the next council meeting a week from tonight, next Monday. That's going to be at 6 o'clock? Drew?
Sorry, muted. Yes, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock next week for those items that we just mentioned. Anything else for the good of the order? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, good night.
Good night.